I'd like to call this meeting of the Northwest Local School District Board of Education to order. Larry, if you'd call the roll, please.
Mr. Detschel?
Here.
Mrs. Detschel?
Here.
Dr. Heether?
Here.
Mr. Harlow?
Here.
If everyone would join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agree with the legislative update?
Oh, I have none.
Well, the next agenda item is a legislative update. Mr. Harlow?
Mr. President, I do not have a report. It's been a pretty, fairly quiet summer in Columbus.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is Butler Technology Update by Mr. Detschel.
I will have a report submitted.
Thank you, Jim. Our next item is Report from Employee Organizations. Are there any certificated or licensed employee, employees here that would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move to the next item of Classified Employees. Are there any classified employees that would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move to Report from School-Related Organizations. Is there anyone from a school-related organization here that would like to speak? Seeing none. Community Comments. I have not received any yellow cards. Larry, have you received any yellow cards from anyone that would like to speak? There's no one that would like to speak, so we'll move on to the next item, which is a superintendent item for certificated and licensed personnel.
Yeah, we have a few items to deal with regarding personnel, and then we will have a couple of handbooks to review with the board, and which we'll bring back at the July 28th meeting for approval, and then we'll turn it over to the architects to give us an update on our, where we are in the process for the master facility plan, and also get input from the board members for the master facility plan. So the first item under Personnel are some resignations. We have four certificated resignations, three extra-duty resignations, and three procedural extra-duty resignations. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the certificated license, personnel retirements, and resignations as listed.
So moved second.
May I ask a question?
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Where's Debbie Southborn?
She is taking a position outside of education.
Yeah. I'm sorry. Good, Jim.
Normally, we would not approve a resignation after July 10th, but in this situation, she is not going to teach. She's going out, getting a job outside of education. So that's why we accepted that.
Enter with these extra-duty resignations for seventh grade, it looks like Colrain and White Oak Middle for football. Do we have people lined up to coach these kids?
Yeah, those are procedural ones, so we are hiring classified people for these positions, which we'll do, so they resign, you know, at the beginning of the year, so it's a one-year position.
Oh. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Larry, if you'd call for the vote, please.
We have a little technical glitch trying to move.
Pending the technical glitch.
We'll get there.
We've been, we've had our meetings on laptops for a little over a year now, and it really tends to go pretty smooth, and you can always go back and look at what we've done since June of '13 electronically, and then, and then previous to that, it's all paper. But it's not without its bugs. Yes.
That's better already.
Okay. The motion carries five to zero. Howard's not.
Just a second, Michael. Okay, here we go. I didn't, yeah.
I'm showing that.
There we go.
Okay, yes, the motion carries five to zero. I wonder why I got that. The next item is Classified Personnel. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, under Classified Resignations and Retirements, we have four classified resignations and two procedural classified resignations. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the classified retirements and resignations as listed.
Second. The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Larry, please call the roll. Motion carries five to zero. Our next item is Certificated and Licensed Personnel. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, here we have one administrative appointment, and that is for Brenda Miller to be the new Supervisor of Accountability Services. We will bring her, as well as Adam Beidenbach, the new Corin Elementary Assistant Principal that was hired a couple meetings ago, to the next meeting for an introduction to the board. We have five other initial appointments, several extra-duty contracts, several band assistants, and then a resolution to hire a non-licensed coach. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the certificated license personnel items as listed.
So moved or seconded?
Second.
Either way. The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, how many other teachers do we need to hire now?
We will have an update for you at the next meeting, so we'll get that.
Andrew, just a question. I don't remember that title when I was here prior terms Supervisor of Instructional Accountability Services. Is that a state mandated?
It's not necessarily state mandated. What that position currently does is they oversee the EMIS person, which is all the data we have to submit to the state. And they also have been working hand-in-hand with the teachers for the SLO process, which is the Student Learning Objectives. Those are about 40 to 45 percent of our teachers have to use those for their student growth measures for their evaluation. So it's an important position and a very busy person.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Larry, please call for a vote. And the motion carries five to zero. Our next item is Classified Personnel Item for the Superintendent.
Yes, we have five classifieds for approval, two classified substitutes, and two changes in status. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the classified personnel items as listed.
So moved, seconded. The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Larry, please call the roll. Shows you haven't voted, Dan.
I'm not getting an opportunity to.
Voter suppression.
How to explain it?
Voter suppression. The motion carries five to zero. Our next item is the Transportation Handbook. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, we have some items just for information. These handbooks we bring to the board just as an item for information. We'll bring them back for the next meeting on the 28th for approval. The first one is the Transportation Handbook, which Mr. Molling has reviewed, and he's just letting the board know that there'll be no changes for the 1415 handbook. If you want an actual copy of the handbook, you can ask him, and he will send you an email version of it, electronic version of it.
Is, and I guess that ultimately will be available online for anyone who wants to see it?
Yes.
Which it is, the previous one should be online right now.
Correct.
So any discussion from the board members? Hearing none, we'll go on to the next item.
Okay, the next one are the Human Resources Handbooks. So we have both the Certificated and Licensed Handbook and a Classified Handbook. You also have a memo from Tracy Ray, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, kind of explaining the changes, and I'll go ahead and turn it over to her here in a second when she logs in to kind of describe the changes in the two handbooks that will be brought back to the board on the 28th.
We don't have very many changes for the certified staff. We have no changes at this time. And for the classified staff, we have two pieces that we're bringing to you. One is regarding the PDL system, which you have already approved, and also just some details from the Classified Employee Management Council for guidelines within transfers. Again, we brought this earlier in the year regarding some changes that came out of the Employee Management Council, ways of looking at doing transfers better and those types of things. So we'll be bringing this back to you for approval on the 28th.
I would like to add one comment regarding the, these handbooks. We will be working with the staff members this summer when they come back to school to start teaching again and come back. We have a program we're putting together regarding sexual harassment, sexual battery, et cetera. As you've seen in the news, we had another teacher that was indicted from Northwest High School regarding sexual battery. So we are doing everything we possibly can to respond to that. First, I want everyone to know that in each of these incidents, we immediately called the police. And that is literally within hours of finding out, meeting with the teacher, putting on administrative leave, and then literally my next phone call was to the attorney and then to the police. So we dealt with it as quick as we can and immediately. We're also putting together a PowerPoint that will show the various responsibilities of a teacher and how we are required to be, have the care and custody first and foremost of these students in the violation of the public trust, and we'll be dealing with that this summer when they return. And then the third piece we're doing is that we are going to reinstitute a school safety hotline that we had probably six or seven years ago, and it just stopped getting used. So we basically stopped using it. We have a quote from a couple companies. We're going to look probably at third and a fourth quote. What it'll do, it'll allow students not only to call about concerns and remain anonymous about school safety, but also possible inappropriate conduct by teachers as well. And I've talked to both the owners of the companies about that, and that's something they will do. So we are doing everything we can to prevent these types of things from happening and responding to it correctly. But I think it's important for people to know that in addition, we are calling the police immediately, and they're being prosecuted accordingly, which they should be. And, you know, we're dealing with it that way as well, and are not trying to turn a blind eye to it or ignore possible complaints immediately, even if we don't know if it's potential criminal or actually not. We allow the police to make that decision. So these will be brought back to the, to the board, these handbooks, at the next meeting for approval.
Andrew, I appreciate those comments, because I know there's been a former board member that's made some allegations in the Inquirer, in the editorial page on Saturday, and I thought he took some cheap shots at the district. And I do know that we call the police right away when we find something out. And I know these teachers are trained what to do, what you're not allowed to do, and I just, you know, I just want to say that it's not, it's a societal problem, I believe. These adults know what's right and what's wrong. And I appreciate you saying that.
Jim, I would agree it's a societal problem. I saw the edit, the guest, or the letter to the editor. I personally didn't view it as a cheap shot.
I absolutely think it was a cheap shot at our district. Absolutely.
I think this former board member, he's not here to defend himself, but I know that he's, he is as dedicated and as loyal to the Northwest School District as any board member that's ever served, in my opinion, Jim. That's mine. I know you and I differ, but I do believe it is societal, you know, an adult knows what an adult is doing.
Right.
But you've got to also understand that this former board member was a victim of the, the priest abuse thing. So there's a little bit more of a vested interest there.
And that's okay, but the way it's portrayed is that we didn't do anything about it and we sat on it, and we contacted the authorities right now. We didn't wait a day. We didn't wait two days. You know, we contacted them right when we found out. And I just, you know, I think, I think we did the right thing. I mean, you know, I mean, that would be like, you know, what about the kid that brought the gun into this house? Should the superintendent be landblasted? Should the board members be landblasted because the kid brings a gun into school? I mean, if a kid wants to do that, they're going to be able to do it, you know, but nobody was taking shots at anybody else at any other school districts. But, you know, Bruce seems to do that on, you know, it seems like a monthly basis.
Well, I'd like to add that I'm glad that we are taking a very proactive approach at this, and to me, it's personally my number-one priority, and I think everyone up here is the safety of our students. And I'm looking forward to seeing the presentation you put together, and I expect it to be very robust and direct and, you know, educate people as to what happens when you get involved in these type of things. And speaking for myself, I'd be willing to use the full weight and power of this board to just absolutely make examples of these people and, and let the other employees see what happens. You know, we've seen two of them go to prison, and I don't know what's going to happen to this third one. On a sort of related note, talking about these books, I called you earlier today about, on page 10 of the Certificated Employee Book, that it mentions that each person employed by the board to work as a school health assistant, teacher counselor, on and on, shall receive four hours of in-service training in youth development within two years of commencing employment with the district. And you explained it to me, this is a statutory thing, but it seems like it should be sooner than within two years of commencing employment. So I would just have to ask that we sort of look at that and work that out so that it's almost a pre-employment thing.
Yeah, it is, and we do that the first few days.
Okay. Yeah, but in our policy, it says, it says within two years, but we tighten that up a little bit when we bring this back, however it works so that it's within the law.
Yeah, and just to, just to clarify, the way it's read in, in the handbook is actually a direct copy of the policy, so the handbook can't change the policy. So the board would have to actually change the policy that then would be changed in the handbook. We will certainly make sure it's, it happens immediately upon hire, you know, prior to the first day or within the first couple weeks of school.
I just wanted to follow up on as far as, obviously, this is, this is an issue, and unfortunately, you would think adults should know right from wrong, and the fact that they've seen, actually, Dan, three, three have, are, one's on his way to prison, two of them are in prison now, so that's three. And if that doesn't show you that this board is, and this district is very proactive with this. I've actually been contacted from employees from several other school districts that commend us on how quickly we call the police. I've been told off the record how some districts kind of cover it up for a little bit, and we definitely haven't done that. So anything we can do to keep making sure this doesn't happen again, but it is frustrating that you would think when, with, with the amount of teachers just in this last two years of, of being prosecuted, and these other people still haven't learned from that, I'm not real sure what we're going to do to get through to them, but I would just like to say that it was frustrating, the article, because the way it was insinuated that this new board's going to be magical, when in fact, two out of the four have happened since we've had a new board. I don't think you no more blame that on the new board than you blame that on the administration. So again, I, I think we're doing what we need to do, and let's hope these people wake up and not let this happen, this doesn't happen anymore.
And just one more comment on all three of these recent ones, we, they all three resigned. We would have processed termination, and they, they came in and resigned before that could happen. Second is, we've submitted the license revocable process on all three of them. The one is still pending, but the other two had their license removed, so they won't ever teach in a public school in Ohio ever again. And I even testified on the prosecution's behalf in one situation. So we are being very active in terms of what we can do. You know, the prison piece is something the prosecutor and the judge has to decide, obviously, but we're doing everything we can on our, on our end as well.
In fact, I mean, we even took a pretty, pretty stuff, harsh stand, even with a transportation employee. So I think, I think this district has definitely, you know, takes a very hard stand with this.
Thank you.
And I'm looking forward to seeing the presentation when it's ready.
Okay.
Was there any other comment about the Human Resources Handbooks that will be brought back to us next week for approval?
I haven't, I haven't weighed in yet, but I just want to go on record and say that this is very, you know, dealing with any mistreatment of children, you know, sexual or otherwise, is a very, very serious topic, very, very high priority for me, very near and dear to, to my heart, and I certainly haven't, I'm not, I'm not aware of any circumstance, you know, since I've been on the board, where we could find fault with how it was done. Obviously, the, just the fact that it keeps happening is, is a concern to everybody, but, and I, I think we're doing what we can and need to be on the lookout for other things and find out how, you know, there are other districts in other states even, or whatever we hear, but to be as proactive and, and just as, you know, vigilant as possible. But yeah, it's, obviously, it's a societal problem. I mean, we are everywhere from ministry to Boy Scouts, Jerry Sandusky, I mean, it's just all over, and we're obviously doing what we can here. Thank you.
One final, just comment. I kind of equate it with the, you know, Northwest has been more in the news. I mean, even Cincinnati, which is bigger, and it does seem like maybe there's a pattern, but then one would look at Malaysian Airlines and think, my goodness, there's been two major air catastrophes in the last two years, and both have been in the last five months with the same, or whatever the months have been with the same airline. So that's sometimes, it's just the unfortunate way things happen, you know, the serendipitous way things happen, but adults do know better, and if people aren't getting the message at this point, I don't know where you turn. I really don't. But certainly, the bar in our society has been lowered when you have top government officials getting away with things and lying about it and wearing it as a badge of honor ultimately. You can see where the bar in our society has been lowered drastically in the last 10, 15, 20 years.
Okay, thank you.
Just, I do think that the hotline, I think that, that'll be a real positive thing, that if, if a student or even a fellow staff member, you know, thinks something's going on and that they can make a, a call, I think that'll, you know, that's a good thing, too.
But we've got to watch that, though, because there's a thing for medical professionals in Ohio for that, and sometimes people are mad at somebody, and it's like, did you hear what, you know, Dr. Jackson was doing? And they just do that, and you've got to be very careful, because you're opening a can of worms with an anonymous hotline like that. And so I hope there's a way to, to really, you know, I don't know how you would, nobody would give it if it's not anonymous, but, but I know of people who have had reports, names submitted for things that they've done wrong, stealing drugs when they never did, but it's because somebody didn't like them, and it's very easy in this age of the internet to do this sort of thing.
Yeah, we have to fully vet and investigate any kind of allegations like that, but we would, certainly wouldn't just turn it over to the police when some anonymous phone call came in.
Do we have anything that, for example, if, if another staff member suspects something, but then they, they don't tell anybody, and then something happens, and we find out a staff member knew, you know, maybe not so much this, but any type of incidents, do we have anything in place that, you know, there'll be some type of discipline with, you know, that employee for not sharing what they knew or thought they knew?
Yeah, ultimately, they have a legal responsibility to come forward with it. Now, the issue is, how do you prove that? So how do you, how, if someone knew about this last incident, they haven't come forward, how do you ever find that out?
And I don't mean just this, I mean, you know.
But ultimately, yes, it's just a difficult thing to determine unless you start into the investigation and you find some additional information out.
Right.
But yes, ultimately, they do have a legal obligation to come forward, and we do have
You would hope.
grounds to, to discipline for such.
Thank you. And we'll move on to the next item, which is Curriculum and Instruction. Dr. Jackson?
And we also have some handbooks from the Curriculum Department, which are the grading procedures. So you have a memo regarding the changes, and then you have the K-8 grading for elementary and middle school and the high school grading procedures. Ginny, do you have anything you want to describe to the board for this?
Only that there are really no changes to the grading procedures. The changes that were made to those handbooks are really in format. We had a lot of repetitive board policy in those handbooks that we were repeating over and over, and it gets kind of hard when you change board policy to keep up with all the documents that the board policy is listed in. So what we're doing now is doing a K-8 handbook, and then the secondary handbook is the, the course description books, which will be brought back to you probably in December, January next year. What we'll do is we'll take that document, those high school grading procedures, we'll insert them into the course description books, and then instead of having three or four doc, three or four handbooks out there, we'll have two, a little easier for us to find information in. But there are really no changes to the grading procedures, except at the high school level, the, the change in the waiting system was presented earlier this year, and that is now included in that document.
Any comments from the board?
Those will be brought back the 28th for approval.
We'll move on to the next item, which is the Master Facility Planning with the Architect.
Yes, I'll go ahead and turn it over to the architects. I'll let them to come on up to the mic. There's some water up there for you if you want to reintroduce yourselves from the presentation you made, oh, gosh, a couple of months ago.
Great, thank you. It's good to be here. I'm Rob Lasker, I'm with Lesco Architects, and.
You guys want to sit down?
Yeah. Dick Cravill, we're Brock.
I think, I think a couple of us are going to move down there so we can see a little better.
Dick Cravill and Tony Potagil are educational planner, and, you know, I just wanted to say, we appreciate the opportunity. All we do at Lesco is PK through 12 public schools, so that's our passion. Education is our passion, and there's actually a lot of exciting things going on in schools. We talk about 21st century learning and instruction, and then how we can align the facilities with that. So there's, there's a lot of neat things going on in the state, and we've been, have the privilege of being part of that, so we appreciate the opportunity to work with you. All right, there. We're kind of going to look at three parts in our presentation, and of course, feel free to ask any questions anytime or provide input. And we're taking notes, and the whole idea of engagement and master planning is to have input from every stakeholder. Of course, you, you are one of the critical stakeholders as a board. But I'm going to talk about the process, and then we're going to talk about the enrollment projections, and then look at, just give you an update on the facilities assessments. Looking at the process, what we do, and you may remember this, is we establish two committees. This has been very successful for us. And the two separate committees, there's a facilities committee and a finance committee. And those two committees kind of function a little independently, and then we bring them together to look at master facilities options. The facility committee looks at things like how educational programming, the building assessments, the enrollment projections, all relate to, you know, coming up with a master plan in the facilities. At the same time, in the beginning, the finance committee is looking at things like your bonded indebtedness, bond issues, different combinations of potential ways to, to generate funds, whether it be income tax, sales tax, combination of those things, maybe private funding. In one district, we funded it by, it's called COPS Certificate of Participation, where they sold bonds, and they didn't have to go to the voters for those funds. So there's a lot of different ways you can look at funding a building program, and the finance committee will begin to look at those. Then what happens is we merge these committees together, and they begin to look at master facility plan options, all the different options that are available based on that input of information into those committees. You know, here, I just put a few up here. I'm looking new buildings, conditions renovations, consolidation, you look at the costs and the funding of, of different options, you look at grade alignments, or combinations of, of all those. And as you feed the committees information is that, and as they look at all these different master plan options, they begin to vet out things that don't make sense, and you find yourself, you know, kind of coming down to maybe three, four master plan options that really make sense for the district when you look at all the variables. And then the next step is to, you know, take that out to the community, engage the community, give the community an opportunity to look at those, to provide their input back to the committees. And then the committees come together again and select the final master plan from that and provide a recommendation. So that's kind of briefly, the plan. plan from that and provide a recommendation. So that's kind of briefly the plan. Obviously, there's a lot of things going on in the middle there, but that's the basic master planning process that we used in the past, and that's what we have set up here for the district. Do you have any questions? Wanted to take you through the planning schedule briefly. You can see it's tight. The goal is to have, you know, decision, or at least the information to the board to be able to make a decision in December. But what we've done here is, if you look in July, we'd had a meeting with the leadership, with the curriculum people, the business department. The reason we started there is just because this meeting was a little later, and we wanted to get a jump. But we've already had some input from them, talked about a number of issues, and we'll roll that into the committees. At the same time, we just had the enrollment projections completed, and Tony will talk about those. And while we're doing that, we're assessing all of your buildings. We're in the process of doing that, and Dick's going to briefly describe that. Here you have some, at the top here, some board meetings, and we'll communicate with the board and bring you up to date on the process. And here in the center is our two committee groups. We start with the committees together initially. We explain the process. We allow them to ask any questions they have, and we get everybody familiar with the master planning process. Then we split them into the two separate groups, and they begin to gather and look at and analyze information on their own from the financial end and the facilities. And then we bring them back together in the end to pool all that information and vet the different options. In that process, we also meet with the, with the staff, the elementary, middle, and high school staff. We provide two opportunities that year. And if you look at this in detail, we've tried to align things so that when we get information from the different groups, we can feed it back into the, into the committees. So we've staggered things, hopefully. And some of these can change, obviously, as different schedules happen. But we try to at least start the meetings with the educators so that we can bring that information to the next facilities and financial group, and then we do another round after that. And we keep feeding that information into the groups. And after they kind of come up with a handful of viable options, here's where we take that out to the community in October. We also have to work with the calendar of the district calendar, which is why we sort of held off till the end of August and September to meet with the staff. During that whole time, we're looking at every different option that you can imagine, and every variable that you can imagine. There's no idea that's not viable to begin with. And so we really push people to think out of the box, to really analyze all the information. And initially, you know, it's like your typical brainstorming sessions where you just want to get everything out in the beginning, and then you narrow that down as you go through the process. And then presentation to the board at the end, and when the board makes its approving. So that's the schedule in a nutshell. And there we go. Tony's gonna talk briefly about the updated enrollment.
All right, just to spend just a few minutes on the enrollment study, that you probably didn't get the full piece. Just a couple of things, you know, what we're, if you look at it just overall, what really jumps out at you about the enrollment in Northwest is, it's actually very consistent over time. I mean, the numbers line up very consistently. So, you know, again, when you look at enrollment studies, just as you go through these, because they're, the basis of this study is a couple of things. What is live births? And so the first five years of any study are very accurate, because that's, they're out there actually getting the counts from zero to four. And then after that, because you can, if you look at the top line, where's his pre-K and K, you can see in 2018, 19, it's 240, it's 672, and then those numbers really flatten out.
Do you see that like there were, like the 10-year period? I mean, you're only talking 100 kids different within the next 10 years. I mean, is that typical of a district?
Well, a couple of things are happening. You've got very stable live births. The pre-K numbers, you can see across 235, 231, 230, 48, 239. So the kids coming in are stable. That number seems to be, that'd be a good predictor for your kindergarten and your population going in. You don't have a lot of new housing, so we're not expecting, you don't have big development coming in, so you have a huge spike. The other thing that was in that study, you know, there are approximately 12,000 students in the district, so you've got about 9,500 of those. The other three are in all of the, we have a lot of opportunities for kids to choose places to go. That's about 22% of your population, and the study was really saying that's probably not gonna change. It's pretty historical. And when I talked to the leadership team, they really, they saw a dip, which I think we all saw a dip statewide in '08 and '09 because the economy, it was difficult for people just to pay tuition, and now they're coming back. And then you've got some historical components there where people come into the district from those other entities or go out. So, and usually middle school and the high school are pretty typical. So you keep your elementary population, you maybe gain some in middle school, and then maybe you lose some kids in high school because they're thinking about opportunities, because they've got a lot of choices besides the high schools here. So that's really striking. Now, what it doesn't really show, and it's really the conversation, that's the deeper conversation that we're gonna need to have with the leadership team is, so where are, how does this play out in the district? How does it play out in the buildings? Are the buildings, I'm sure the buildings aren't as evenly distributed as this, and they're not, because we've got a lot of different buildings, especially in the elementary. So that will be a real point, take a real close look at, and see how those numbers fall out, and then how that meshes with the facility study. So when Dick brings those ideas to us, depending on, you know, what buildings, are all the buildings gonna be recommended to be, continue to be in service? Is there a building that's not gonna be in service? Where is it in the district? How does that fit to where those kids are at? How do we, how do we make those plans going forward? So, so actually, the good news is that you've got a really stable population, and it'll be help us in the planning piece. And then we're just gonna have to see how things line up from enrollment. So live births look good, pretty, you don't have a lot of building going on, and that's really the basis for what's going on. So, again, when you get past 18 and 19, your elementary numbers are projections. So I always recommend in the district, in District I, we were always updating our numbers because this is a projection. So it's still a guess, although the first five years are the best part of this guess. The other 10 go out pretty far.
I've got a question.
Go ahead.
Have you noticed when you have a district, like, say, for example, we would build, I don't know, a brand-new high school? That could affect the numbers, too, as far as maybe people that normally would go elsewhere to high school? Do you see much of a fluctuation that, oh, now this, all of a sudden, they're seeing some? Because I know we saw that, I believe, when Monford Heights was built, that actually some of the kids that might have gone to a parochial elementary actually stayed at Monford Heights, because it was a brand-new building, state-of-the-art. Do you think that would affect much or not really?
The only I would say, I think you have some pretty established parochial private options here.
It's a large.
In the conversation I had with Andrew, that they were, and they're pretty large. And you had, you had a historic number in the 20% range, seemed to do that. So there's a legacy piece to that. There's just the, it's, so how much of an impact that would be when you change buildings or change structure, it's really gonna be a guess. And my guess would be, at least initially, you may still get that legacy piece, because it's really kind of rooted in the district as a whole. So you don't get, you haven't had a lot of spikes. Even when the tuition issue came, you had a little bit of a dip, but people hung on to their options.
Right.
So it's an interesting question, and it's one you need to think about, because
Because we haven't had any.
If you build a, if you build a new middle school, and it's state-of-the-art, well, then attract more middle school kids from parochial private. But we can still lose kids on the other end. Because if you look at the survival rates for each of these grade levels, the high school survival rates are not 100%, because they start, because that's where you lose some kid. So you gain kids through the elementary, you gain some in the middle school, you lose some in, and in the end, whether you could gain more by having more opportunities, I mean, intuitively, you would say probably yes, at least initially. But those are really the questions. Really, those are the questions we want to start to tease out when we really work with the committee and talk about enrollment, and where the kids are in the district. Because depending on where the building is and where it's located, if that building has, we gotta move kids around. Where are they going? And you know, the elementary organization patterns has different patterns. We've got K-2, 3-5, we've got K-5s. So how does that all fit? And do we want to take a break? Do we want to go back to one type of setup, and how would those kids be organized? Any other questions on the enrollment data? Dick?
One thing I'd like to point out is that we did get some maps of the district, and there are specific targets where we use the group. And I think there's some impact on the elementarys in particular, but the middle schools, so where that goes, the south.
The south of the district, right. Right. Well, the other piece, too, is to look at, we start looking at buildings, and the building, so are we overcrowded in a particular grade level?
Or are buildings in bad enough shape where you gotta put money into it? Is it worth putting money into that building?
Right. Or do we have class ratios in one building higher than a class ratio in another building? So we've got too many second graders over here, but we haven't moved them because of the location, and we got less here. And I don't know that, because I haven't really looked at, maybe that piece is not charted. So when you start really getting deeper into the numbers, what you want to end up, when we get done, is you want, you want a good balance to the district. So, yeah, we don't want to put 20, we don't have a 28 to 1 ratio in one elementary building and a 20 to 1 in another. We want to get, we want to balance those out as best we can. Thanks for the question, Dick. Okay, thank you. You're up.
Next, we have a slide, and I will briefly give you the status.
You can press, press the right.
Right button?
Right and green.
The site visits by the team, the 13 buildings will be complete this Wednesday. We still have our engineering reports. And our team, the engineers, have not yet visited Northwest, Taylor, or Struble. I've been to all 13, so architecturally, we've looked at all the buildings. We do get a lot of feedback from your staff, that the maintenance people are spot-on. When they call, they come. And I think the buildings I would classify as well of, particularly the places where we see a lot of landscaping going on in the elementary. But the high schools are in wonderful shape. I will be very interested to see what our engineers say about some of the systems. We are looking at things like roofs. The big dollar items are usually the roofs, the air conditioning, the windows. And I think some of your electrical systems, you're going to find that there are parts that are no longer available. And so we will, we will be gathering all that into reports that will then project. We are dividing it based on the original state reports. We are updating them, but also adding a factor into there in that we're dividing it into a year, a year spread of 0 to 5, and then up to 10 and beyond. So there's more flexibility in doing our master plan, so that we can look at things that are on the table immediately, and then step back and do it the way the state does, which is more of a long-term viewpoint. We'll be complete by August, and our goal is to be able to go to that first committee meeting with an initial report. It'll probably be a draft at that point, until we drill down and get into some more of the numbers. I am interested in the fact that the southern end of the district is growing, and that seems to be where you're also the most landlocked. We do have the luxury of lots of land around most of these buildings, but Monford Heights, for instance, is a little bit tighter. So we'll see. I think that's all part of the plan. I will bring an update on the site plans, which is something the state does not do in their reports. And I think this district will be important as to where additions can be done easily, and how that gets implemented, costs associated with that. So we'll turn it back over to Rob. I mean, I want to do a little wrap-up here before we take a quick break.
No, I think that's pretty well where we are at. We're just getting going here in terms of the master planning process. And obviously, surely, we'll have a lot more to share with you. Really open to any questions.
And just for the board's information, you plan on coming each month at the second meeting of the month, like August 25th, you'll be here to give an update, and then the second meeting is September. So, okay.
Yeah, Rob, I do have a question. I do want you guys to look at if we could build one high school for our whole district. And the reason why I say that is because we have two high schools. One's got 2,000 kids, one's got 1,000 kids. And in my opinion, the kids going to Northwest don't have as many choices on their classes as the kids in Colray, or one district. I think that is a big thing. You know, we're not two separate school districts. And I think a kid at Northwest should have the same choices as the kid at Colray. And that's, that's a big thing with me, if we could look at, you know, if you go to one high school, you know, build a new high school, maybe close down three or four elementaries, you know, combine schools, and see if we can do that. I mean, that's something that I'm very interested in seeing, that that's possible.
Yeah, we'll definitely take a look at that. We're actually gonna look at every, you know, different option of consolidation. That's one area of consolidation to look at.
Right. Because, you know, if you can close three or four schools, obviously, you're saving a bunch of money in expenses, and I get it, it costs to build a school. I get that. You know, but there's, should be some options out there that we can look at. You know, our last, what was the last time we built a school in our district? In 90?
'97.
'97. So, you know, it's, I think it's long overdue, and I think, I think the kids at the high school level need to be on the same wavelength. Because I, I mean, I, and I know I'll get kicked back from one side of the district or the other side, but it's a fact. They don't get the same wages. And I think that's, I think that's a real problem.
I would also like to add, and I don't want to step on Jim's kind of territory here, but, you know, one of the things I look at with Northwest School District is the large number, and it seems to be increasing number of students participating in career tech through Butler Tech, which is gonna have, obviously, an effect. And Butler Tech is, you know, a very entrepreneurial, very forward-thinking career technical organization, always has their fingers on the pulse of what's, what employers demand in terms of skill. So I do see some, some changes coming down the pike. I don't specifically know what they are, of course, but, you know, I think that the career technical experience is gonna be vastly different in 2023 than it is in this year. And so I hope that, you know, we're including them in everything that we do, and trying, at least, sort of like the high school level. And, you know, there's a push at the state now to talk about instituting some career tech programs in middle school, too. That's, you know, how that, I don't think we're gonna have definitive answers on that, you know, by December. We're wrapping this up. But certainly a proponent of flexibility and continuing, keep our eye out for a lot of changes.
And if I can throw out a couple of thoughts here, I'm open to anything at this point. I can just say, Jim, I talked to a few friends who've lived in the district a long time about the merger thing, and I'm still wide open to that idea. And they were like, sure, as long as it's called Colray. We do have a big district. We go from I-74 to John Gray Road, essentially, Great Miami River, Hamilton Avenue, sort of. That kind of gives you an idea how big it is. A thing that Andrew and I have mentioned is maybe a A thing that Andrew and I have mentioned is maybe a K-8 school. Our two oldest schools are at Poole and Springdale. Schools that go back to the 1920s and 30s. And maybe using, putting a new building where the football field is so we can continue to use the old ones while we're building the new ones. But I view this as a, as an exciting time. Of course, it comes down to dollars and cents. I especially liked what you said about perhaps having a way to do this without, you know, having to say, hey, voters, here's another thing to vote, spend money on and raise your taxes. But I think it's an exciting time and I think it's something that is due because it's been so long, so.
I'd like to comment that sitting up here at this table, I know Mr. Bowling's been here his whole life and four of us have been here our whole lives. And so you probably have.
I'm an outsider.
He's not too outside. He's been here 10 or 12 years. But I mean, you've got several hundred years' worth of folks that have lived here and just watched all this develop. And it does seem like you've done your homework as far as three guys that have not set foot here to the best of my knowledge until a couple of months ago. And so I'm pleased with that. And speaking for myself, I'm really interested to hear what an outside person has to say about all this because we all have our opinions. And I'd certainly value that recommendation of we should do anything, we should do nothing, we should remodel this or build that or get rid of this piece of property. And I think as a, we're also looking for a recommendation on what to do with our school that's closed right now, Beavis, because that's an ongoing expense to maintain that. Did you visit that building also?
No, we have not visited that.
Right, yeah, I still think that would be a part of going up and just looking at what's there and going inside. Because we certainly need to make a decision because we're going to end up heating that for another winter. And we still, I think we had a cost estimate of $35,000 to $40,000 a year just to sit on that piece of property. So we're kind of hoping to get some recommendation on what to do with that so the board can move forward also, so.
I think another thing that's key, specifically since we haven't had a new building in 17 years, and it was only one new building on the south end of the district, that we need to keep in mind, especially if we're going to go to our taxpayers, that we need to do what's going to benefit all the students, not just a brand-new elementary over here. And then this whole area isn't seeing anything. Even a remodel, they don't see that as the same. So, I mean, as a board, I would hope to think, you know, it, I mean, we tried to put a Bonlevy up a few years back to do a bunch of stuff, and that went down. So, I mean, I don't see us building four or five new buildings. So I think we need to keep in mind, we need to do what's going to benefit all the students. So whether that's starting at the top or, you know. I just hesitate doing, going into this thinking, oh, well, we'll build one elementary because that's only going to be one area.
Yeah, many times in larger districts, we have to do a segmented plan. Where you have phase one, phase two, phase three. You have the whole plan set.
Sure.
And then you start to deal with the priority areas.
Right.
If we look at all that.
You know, we just need to keep in mind, the last building was only one and it was at the total south end of the district. It was a great big district that hadn't seen anything, brand-new buildings.
A lot of remodeling, but nothing brand-new, so. But does any of the administrators up here have any comments? Because it's certainly interesting.
Just one comment, maybe possible clarification regarding Beavis. And maybe this has changed. I don't remember when we had a committee that came together to look at the Beavis property and make some recommendations. Their recommendation was basically to hold on to the property as potential land that we may end up building on. So potentially some sort of repurposed space for, if not a building, maybe some sort of athletics facility or something like that, or to use it as a swing space so as you're building buildings and not having to move students around. Because that, but it was never something that we considered reusing that building or looking at that building again. So I don't know if the board's changing. I can't remember when we brought that recommendation back to.
I think it was back in December. And I don't, I didn't think we really reached a final conclusion. But once, once we got to the point, and I would certainly like to have you go walk through it and take a look at it and say, you know what, you guys, this needs to go. Or hey, I would leave it to you to make that recommendation as an outside person that, and we don't have to go with your recommendation and we'll probably argue about it. But the, but I'd still like to hear what you have to say, just looking at it architecturally and say, you know what, this thing's doomed or get rid of it. I mean, we do have an expense every month because we, I believe we're sending a maintenance person over there every day, which is proper to just check on it and make sure the copper miners aren't over there and all those things. And so I think that's an important thing to do is get over there and get a look at it. So and I'm sure Mr. Bowling and Mr. Jackson.
We'll get you over there.
Get you over there, so.
Just to add, and I think Jim made about programming, you know, as we go through this process of what buildings and then really building capacity and interest in the community, this is really all about improving the educational opportunities. So wherever we put the building, you know, wherever we can really enhance educational opportunities across the district and do this in the best interest of the kids and the community, that's really part of the conversation we're going to have in the facilities committee. Because, you know, if you build a building and you don't, and you don't improve the program, then we're at status quo. So, you know, I would add, besides the career prep components, credit press coming on board, we don't know how the impact that's going to be. So there's going to be things happening in the district from a programming standpoint that we're going to have to pay attention to. We're not going to know all, things are going to change, but we have to develop these buildings in the future to be maintaining these kids. So we'll keep that in mind as we go forward.
So we will see you back on, your schedule shows a month or so, or?
Yeah, they'll be here August 25th at that meeting.
And you're always welcome to attend our meetings and you're always available on waycross.org.
They are, yeah.
Oh, that's good. Watch the next ones. You don't need to watch any more of the old ones, so. Yeah, we're all, you know, here we sit together and we're, we reach this point where we're talking to an architect about looking at our facilities. So I personally think that's great and thanks for being a part of that, so.
Very impressed with the stuff you put together and kind of a fresh set of eyes looking at the district, I think is a healthy thing. So thank you for all you've done so far.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen.
And we'll move on to the next item, which is the treasurer's search update. And this is for the board to discuss the timeline for our treasurer's, treasurer's search.
I sent out, on the Friday update, I did send out a potential brochure that we could use. I had a couple of questions on that that I need to answer. One is the timeline. So right now we have that we would send this out tomorrow. And I know that the board has mentioned they don't want to use OASBO and OSBA, which is fine, but we can still use their job boards to put it out there. So we can send it to OSBA, OASBO, Ephron Associates, Bass, there's some other ones we'll send it to.
I believe that if we use the national ASBO for anything, that that makes us eligible to send it out nationwide too on ASBO?
I can look into that as well.
You know, are we leaving that salary on there? Because I saw Dan where you wanted to lower that salary.
I wanted to leave a range here depending on who showed up.
I think we should leave it the salary how we had it on that, just to, we don't have to.
Well, they'll pass up Andrew pretty soon. We can't have that.
Maybe we should give him a raise.
Well, that's, that's, we're going to look at him next week. But my, my goal as far as the timeline was, I want to, at the next meeting, I want to vote or whatever we have to do to go ahead and post this, say, August 1st, and take resumes for, or however we do that for a period of time and have our meetings and interviews and hopefully get somebody hired by the end of September. But I don't know if you think eight weeks is enough to do that or what's your opinion?
How long did it take for us to hire Randy?
That's Larry, he was here the whole time.
Years. There's about two years. That's not a good time.
I think it was a couple of months. I think, I think eight weeks is probably reasonable if we have a goal of putting this out there August 1st.
Yeah, I mean, it just all depends on who we get to apply. I mean, you may get some, we may not get somebody we want to hire. I mean.
Well, what about the?
It's kind of late in the game, but.
I originally put that we would advertise it tomorrow if we can make these changes. But if you want, if you want me to wait another week, I mean, I can do that. We probably need to bump everything back a little bit. I was going to have the application deadline until the 15th of August, which would be this week and three additional weeks for any applicants. And then the board would start on August 25th, that Monday. An exec session probably go through and figure out who you're going to interview and schedule all those.
Why don't you stretch that out to the August 21st then? Because I'm sure there's people that are traveling over the summer and that kind of opens up that window a little bit.
Now, now how are we going to do it with the, when we do advertise and the resumes come in? Are they coming to you, Dan, or we're, how's that going to work?
I'd be fine with that. And I'd contact the board members as they came in. I don't know if you, this is a board project. This isn't a, an administrative project. This is the board's project to hire somebody. We can get a post office box or.
Well, do we just get a copy of every resume, each board member?
I think that'd be.
Oh, yeah.
Well, ask for five copies in the application.
Why don't they, why don't they hear it and they just make us copies of every?
I would rather that they weren't opened until we opened them.
Okay. Well, we'll just get them all in, we'll get them night and then we'll open them.
Okay. Is that, what do you think, Michael?
Yes, we can ask, well, obviously, we can ask for five copies so that way.
Right.
Resume, so.
Yeah, or for simplicity's sake, tonight, when we do the opening, we can just run. I mean, for somebody to make five, it just doesn't fit in the statement.
I can, a couple of suggestions. We can use our online process and have them apply online where they can submit the various artifacts up there, their resume, their cover letter, transcript, whatever you ask for. And then it's not a public record until we print them. So if we're concerned about it being confidential, which I think you try to need to keep it as confidential as possible, we can basically, when it's time for an exec session, I can print five and give all five of you a copy of it and then you can screen them.
I would want to make sure that somebody that was applying was protected if they were working somewhere else. And you know, obviously you might not want your person who's employing you now to know that you're applying at another district, so.
I think that seems more professional than to ask applicants to mail five copies. That just, when have you ever done, I mean, that just sounds tacky.
It was just a thought Dan had.
I had, but.
Why don't we have them mailed to the office addressed to the board president and do not open them until we all five are, until we all five decide what we're, the day we're going to do that. And have a cutoff date and then we'll. I'll go from there.
Just curious, I'm just curious, your thought, why you're uncomfortable with the online process when that's how we do everything else?
That's how the district hires employees. As far as the board, if somebody's applying here and they might not want to let their, is there a way that people can see who's applied online?
No, no. Well, I mean, Tracy would be the one to ask, but I don't think so.
I would just as soon have the board be the first group to review them. And certainly everybody probably knows people they'd like to have apply here and we can't control that, so.
So the deadline to apply, what was that date again?
What is, what is the, what day of the week is, is August 21st?
August 21st is a Thursday.
What did you originally have, Andrew?
I had the 15th of Friday before, but if we're not going to get together to review them until the 25th, then there's, you could go until the 21st or even the 22nd and maybe have an exec session on August 25th afterwards to, at the end of the meeting, to get copies and screen them.
Sounds good.
So you're going to have the cutoff of the?
22nd.
22nd is a Friday, the 21st is a Thursday?
We'll have it on Friday.
Yeah, because we'll see, we'll get them on the 25th then.
Whatever comes in the mail on the business day of the 22nd, is that what we're doing?
That's fine.
Are you applying, Todd? I see you shaking your head, yeah. Fair enough.
And then we'll have an exec session on the 25th to screen and the board can then narrow it down to how many. Okay.
Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
It's reasonable to me.
And then the brochure that you had?
I will make the changes accordingly with the, with the timeline. And then I will also change, instead of going online, to mailing it to the board president's attention.
At 3240 Banning Road?
Address, yep. We have a resume, license, transcripts, letters of reference. That's, that's okay, those items?
Cover letter?
Cover letter, oh, I had cover letter, yeah. Letter emphasizing qualifications and reasons for the interest. So we'll just get rid of the online application at this point.
Do you have any, anything to add, Larry or Randy, that you think we should be doing? Tracy, do you have anything to add to that?
No.
Okay.
So why don't I, on the, also on the application regarding the remaining timeline, then how about if we say interviews will be August 25th through September 5th? That's a two-week span. I think we'll be able to, we'll have, we'll screen them on the 25th and you'll have two weeks to bring in five or six to interview. Is everyone available the evenings of those weeks?
Is Labor Day the first or the?
Labor Day is the first, yes.
So we're talking, I'm sorry, the eighth?
It would be the week of, you know, sometime between the 25th and September 5th to do the first round of interviews. Does that, would that work or not? If you don't screen them until the 25th, you wouldn't be able to schedule interviews till probably late that week or the next week, probably the next week. So I don't know if the second, third, or fourth, you're going to need two evenings. If you're going to do six people, you're going to need, you should probably plan on six.
Yeah, we should plan for two evenings, yeah.
Two, three-hour evenings.
When we did it the last time, and ultimately Larry stayed for two years, remember I had that clock and it went 30 minutes or whatever it was, 45 minutes. And when the clock, when the bell rang, it was over. So we stayed right on time. Do you remember how we did that? I brought in a timer and that way it just stayed on time. And when the next person was due at 7:45, they came in at 7:45. Ultimately, we didn't hire anybody, but we had some interest.
I can do that with my watch.
Yeah, but I like having that thing that.
So that everybody can see it?
So getting back to our timeline, if the first is Labor Day, then we'll just have interviews from sometime after the 25th till at least the 5th of September, if not a little longer. If you're going to be interviewed, you'll be, you will find out before the 5th if you haven't been interviewed already.
Yes.
And with our goal to hire somebody before the end of September.
So then likely those next two weeks will be for a second round if you choose to do a second round and then name someone on the 22nd of September?
Yeah.
That's the last September meeting.
So.
Right.
That's the goal.
Okay. So I'll leave that on the timetable is we'll do, you want to move the announcement back to August 1st? You want that to go out on August 1st?
We can, we can, you can put it out. When's our meeting next week, on the 28th? I think it'd be okay to put it out on Tuesday morning, the 29th. That way if any other board members have anything else to say, we've got one more board meeting to say it.
Yes, that will work.
Is that okay? If we post it on the 29th of July then? That way if something comes up on the 28th, we'll have another meeting, we can talk about it.
That also gives them about 26, 27 days that.
That's enough.
And I'm sure words out on the street that we're looking for somebody anyway, so.
Yes.
How do you know that? What street is it on?
Banning, Banning Road they're talking about.
Full length of Banning? Okay, so we'll be ready to post it on July 29th and?
Deadline will be 8:22 to, to apply. And then we will do interviews sometime in the week of August 25th through September 5th. I'll just put that on there so now there's kind of a two-week window in there. And action to employ by September 22nd.
Sounds good to me. Great, we'll move on to the next item, which is community comments and questions. Is there anyone here that would like to approach the microphone and ask a question about anything that's been discussed this evening? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the next item. Other board items, Mr. Harlow.
I'm just really glad to begin the process with the architects. That was very, very good. Other than that, I don't really have anything.
Mr. Dutzel?
Nothing.
Mr. Heater?
Yeah, Dan, I think that's something we need to think about in the fall. I've made a promise to Mr. Carpenter, who has missed the last couple of meetings, but he was.
I saw him driving over here today.
I don't know where he is.
He was going towards Northwest High School.
Okay, well, he's wanted a commitment from us that if we don't do something with the uniforms during, you know, to work on during the fall and maybe for the following year for Col rain, year for Col rain, that if we don't do something for Col rain, in fairness, we do away with Northwest. And I said that seemed completely fair to me. So if we're gonna approach that subject, we need to, of course, have the six-month leeway. And that means we'd have to, you know, be scheduling meetings and public input in the fall. I can just tell you, my dad's in a nursing home and one of the housekeepers I just got to talking to
Wait. I just wanna make sure that this isn't another promise that you have to, I mean, I don't care-
I can make a promise to him on, on how I'm gonna approach it. I'm not speaking for you or Jim or Dan or Michael.
Okay. Well, I know, I just, I just wanna make sure. I have no problem with this. I don't have, and I've said this all along with uniforms, one way or the other. I just wanna make sure. And I, I respect Dexter. I know he's very passionate about that. But there's a lot of stakeholders that voices need to be heard before any board member or any of us say, okay, we're gonna do away with this since this, or vice versa. I mean, we, I don't think that's the right way to approach this to automatically, in all fairness, Dexter doesn't even have anybody in the schools. You have a lot of parents in both schools and students that need to be heard from before a blanket decision's made. It's either gonna be both schools or no school. That, that's all I'm saying.
I'm speaking from just my, my opinion that his point is well-taken.
And that's fine.
And, but you can, you know, Pam, you're certainly welcome to, your opinion as you ultimately will have, as Jim and Dan and Michael will have. But, you know, if a parent, you know, makes two kids, of the four kids dress a certain way and lets the other two not, when maybe the other two are getting into as much trouble, you're gonna have a family that breaks apart.
And again, Chris, I'm not arguing whether we should have uniforms or not. Alls I'm saying is, in these last three months, this board has taken a totally different approach on how decisions are made. I hope this, that's going to affect ultimately over three thousand students, not counting the middle school, that it isn't based on three people's decision, it's based on, we have, there's a lot of dialogue going on. It's all, it's all, all I'm saying. And then you also could say, if you're gonna use that argument, then that kinda goes into Jim's argument about, then why do we have two high schools? So, I mean, I think maybe before we make a big, huge decision like this, we might wanna see what's gonna shake out. This is a pretty aggressive timeline with our, with our facilities. You might wanna keep that in mind, too.
And that, that's fine. I just-
And I'm not trying to, Chris, I totally mean, I do not care, one way or another, whether there's uniforms in either school. I do not care. I just wanna see that we don't, that it, whatever, that we, there's a process to making the decision. That's all I'm saying.
Pam, I'm all for having a process. I just presented it tonight, so it's out there, that it hasn't been forgotten. Dexter's point is well-taken. I realize Dexter does not have children in the school district now. I just think that it's something that we need to, because of the timeline, the six months, we can't bring it up next April. You know, we, something that after maybe the planning stuff, maybe we do in November. But I just, you know, wanna, wanna make sure that it's a, an item that we don't put on the back burner and forget about.
There is a statutory requirement to give parents six months' notice prior to going to a uniform. But we also have a board policy that has a procedure listed in it. And the board can change policy, but currently it's JFC-A dash P. So I think the board should look at that because it basically says that October first, a school team brings an proposal to me, then by the end of the month, I bring it to the board. And there's several aspects of it regarding input. And, you know, like I said, if the board wants to change that, that's fine. But they, I think that's where they need to start. I think Pam's idea of seeing what happens with the facility plan isn't a bad idea either. I know that, I've been with this district since two thousand and eight. I think there's only been one or two times where a parent has come to the board complaining about the school uniforms. I understand Dexter is pretty passionate about that, but I'm not really sure why Dexter cares about uniforms in our school district. You know, he does, he's not someone that's waking up, having to make one of his children get in the uniform and whatnot. He hasn't, he doesn't have children in this district. So I don't know why that would be the precipice to change this. You know, I'm not sure what that's-
It's been on my, you know, since I ran, Andrew. Dexter, yeah, I agree. You know, I, I'm not sure quite why it's so important. I think he's looking at it an element of fairness, though, that if, you know, you're gonna do it here, you should do there. But, but that's why we get the input and we just, you know, make sure that it's done fairly and we hear from people. But ultimately, the decision doesn't rest with the popular vote of students, it rests with the people elected as the board.
Right. Did you have any other, I hadn't called on you yet, Pam. Did you have any other comments? Okay.
For board comments?
Thank you.
Um, welcome, Larry. I'm glad you're here. I don't want you to take this wrong. Randy, in seventeen years, this is still, this is sickening to me. I'm sorry that you were forced to go somewhere else because of decisions made by this current board. I wish you all the best. I hope we have applicants. I'll, I'll keep an open mind. But you've got big shoes to fill. You've saved these taxpayers, including ourselves, a lot of money. You've had the best interest of the students. You've worked hard for the levies. And that's gonna be hard to replace. So I apologize and sure wish, if anything else, that could be different.
Can I have the floor back?
I think it's my turn and then I'll call on you again.
Okay.
On a more positive note, it sounds like you've got a great opportunity, Mr. Bertram, and I wish you the very best at the Middletown. I'm sure everything up there's all nice and heavenly and won't be any problems up there. And, and I think Mr. McDonough is an extremely capable individual and I'm glad you're here. And I remember when you were here last time and I'm confident you have the capacity to continue on with what's been put in place and it's been done very well and put in place. And so that should make your time here easier. So there's not a whole lot of stuff to clean up. You're just able to carry forward with what Mr. Bertram has, has installed. And as I've told you, you know, beyond the school thing, we're both men that have wives and families. And, and I sincerely hope that you've made the choices that are in the best interest of, of your wife and kids. And that's really important. And I wish you all the success in the world. And will you be here next week? I think you mentioned you had a meeting, so you're-
It was tonight.
Okay. And you chose to be here? Okay, well, thank you. And with that, we'll, did you have another comment, Chris?
Yeah, and, yeah, I mean, Randy, I sat here for a half hour, you know, a few weeks ago after the meeting. I just don't like it being out there in the public record that, that Randy, who we truly wanted to stay. I think there was a philosophical difference on how things had changed, but nobody forced Randy out. I mean, I wouldn't have sat here and, Randy, I don't operate that way if I didn't want you to stay. I wouldn't have sat here and basically, you know, tried to coerce you, nor would Michael or Dan have. I think it's just that you're more of a guy who, I don't know, I don't know you as well as these guys do. But, but certainly wish you well, wish you were staying, but just wanted out that, you know, we did try to keep you here and that it wasn't that we forced you out or gave you an ultimatum. This was done entirely by you and that, in fact, you did apply for a district job before the board even changed. So I just want that out there, that people don't think that we're strong-arming people out of here. You've done a good job, Randy, and you will be missed.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some of.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? My only comment would be our next meeting is next Monday night-
At seven o'clock.
Here in this room on July twenty-eighth, that's seven o'clock. So I will call for a vote.
Yeah.
And the motion carries five to zero. Thank you all so much for spending your summer evening with us. Good night.